This time I'd like to call this regularly scheduled and duly posted meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order, and at this time I would like to call upon Commissioner Mike Mesmer to lead us into the location.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us his day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and into the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all of you. Glad to have you here at our meeting tonight. A special meeting as we swear in newly elected and reelected officials, so we're glad to have you here. The first item on the agenda though is to the presentation of certificates to the volunteers that participated in the smoke alarm program. So if the chief wants to come up here and help me present these, it's all spoken. Talk about how we're doing.
We have a mayor, April the 16th, commissioners, good afternoon. April the 16th of this year, we had the Harlingen Fire Department American Red Cross Smoke Alarm Campaign, and this is my little thing here, right? I just blocked everything out there now. Try a new one. We picked certain sites in the community, mayor, commissioners, it went very well. We're very honored to be here, and we're pleased to have a lot of the volunteers with us, so we're excited to show you that we made a total commitment with volunteer support from the school districts and our organization here within our city, our SERC team, and other volunteers from our Harlingen Firefighters Association that we plan to honor today. And volunteer groups, as we mentioned, met at Houston, San Houston Elementary. Our principal was, opened our doors, the school district supported us. We reached out, we teamed up in groups of three in the community, out in the community, to install these smoke alarms. At the end of the day, which about noon, we were able to install, 71 smoke alarms were installed in our community, which we are very excited to share with you. Fifty-five homes are much safer this evening because of that, and our great support from our volunteers that gave their all that day. We had great sponsorship from HEB, American Red Cross, we couldn't done it without the American Red Cross, and our partners were the Stefanos that was very courteous in supporting some of our meals for our volunteers. So we thank our volunteers that were there that day. Some of them are here, we want to introduce some plaques to them today, and we call that the installation day. Everything went great. I don't want to take a lot of your time, but we want to thank these individuals. So mayor, I have some certificates up here for them. And if we can have the members of the SERC group, the members of the Harlingen Firefighters Association, fire prevention, San Houston Elementary, and any other individuals that were there with us from the American Red Cross, you can come up here and accompany us. We'd really appreciate it.
Come on up here and thank the audience for their liberation. What a great service to our community that you provided, and that you helped our great fire department. We have been in this installation, I presume, to help keeping our community safer, and that's such a big work thing, and so we are so grateful to each of the volunteers insisting as well present this certificate of appreciation to the American Red Cross. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Harlingen SERC. Thank you. Virginia Armstrong, the principal of San Houston Elementary, and all her students, I'm sure with help, and the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association, thirty-four oh four. Here we go. All right. Well, on behalf of the commission and by the entire community, thank you for your service.
Thank you, mayor, thank you commissioners, and we'll continue this program.
Wait, you got a reach? You got it? Item two is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 20th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now is our most preferred of minutes.
So, second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item three, A through C, is the consent agenda, is a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Sub move, mayor. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item four is the part of the canvass committee to recamass the results of the city of Harlingen May 7th, 2016 general election for District Two. City commissioners' race is a result of recount if necessary. And so that is necessary. As you all know, we had an election here on, general election on May 7th, and following the election, the city commission is the canvassing body, has to canvass the votes. Have to look at the votes, make sure that the votes add up to what the unofficial results announced have said, and that city commission met a special meeting today at noon to canvass the votes. And we approved the canvass of the official votes and passed a resolution today at noon. After that, there was a recount for District Two commissioners' race. The outcome of that race did not change, Commissioner Yulehorn won that election, but the actual number changed by one vote to the opposing candidate, Mr. Quintero. And so we have to now recamass, and so before, so the canvass committee will be the commission, you all each have a report of the committee chairman of the recount committee, Julio Cabasos, which has been signed, and he verifies there that all of the numbers matched except for the early vote for Frank Quintero. Then you have a report signed by me as the recount supervisor that indicates that the numbers are the same for the District Two race. So that is the report from the recount committee presented to you as the canvassing committee. So we'll go on to item five, which is to consider and take action to approve a resolution amending the previous resolution declaring the original results of the city of Harlingen May 7th, 2016 general election in District Two. And so this amended resolution just changes the outcome of District Two, giving 265 votes to Frank Quintero Jr. and 287 votes to Tudor Yulehorn. And with that, is there a motion that we adopt the resolution?
Commissioner, now, mayor, I make the motion that we adopt this resolution.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Now it's time for item six, which is the swearing in and oath of office to newly elected and reelected officials, and item seven, consider, no, item six, swearing in. So as the mayor, I'll go first. And I've asked a great public servant to the entire county, to all of South Texas, one of Harlingen's own, former school board member here in Harlingen, a great jurist, our good friend Magdalia Lopez, judge of the 197th District Court, to swear me in. I think she's going to swear in the others as well.
Before I swear in the mayor, I want to thank him for all the years that he has given Harlingen, in the past, as well as the next term that he's going to serve as our mayor. You know, I live in Harlingen, I am proud of Harlingen, I am proud of the work that all of you have done, under the leadership of our mayor. And I feel that our mayor has really progressed and moved us forward. It's not always, as a mayor, every decision you make is not a popular decision, as a commissioner, as a judge, as a police officer, we have to make decisions many times that everybody's not happy with. But I always figure, well, if the majority is happy, well then I'm happy, you know? Because I tell people, I say, you know, every time I make a decision, one side thinks I'm great and the other side thinks I'm terrible. So you just live with it. But I really do feel that the mayor and this commission has done a great job, and I want to compliment you all, especially our leader, Chris Boswell. With that, now I'm going to swear him in.
My wife, Anita, to join me up here.
Please raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I-
Aye, Chris Boswell.
-dusumely swear-
Dusumely swear.
-or affirm-
Or affirm.
-that I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute.
-the duties of the office-
Duties of the office.
-of mayor-
Of mayor.
-of the state of Texas-
Of the state of Texas.
-and will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability.
-preserve, protect, and defend-
Preserve, protect, and defend.
-the Constitution-
The Constitution.
-and the laws of the United States-
And the laws of the United States.
-and of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. And so it's just a point of personal privilege, I'm going to say, I want to thank my wife, Anita, my family, for supporting my love of service to the community and allowing me to serve in this position. I want to thank the voters, and who came out to vote in this election. We thank them for their support. Thank you brought to all the committee members that worked so hard on the campaign and supported the campaign, supported this reelection. We're going to continue to do the things that we've been doing. We're going to create jobs, we're going to keep our city safe, we're going to beautify the city even more, we're going to expand our role with the UTRGB and seed manufacturing development more on the east side of our airport, along with continued expansion of our retail sector here in this community. And I want to thank the city commissioners, who have been, every one of them, what a great team that we have here to work with, they're fantastic, and I want to thank the city staff for all the great work that they do. And since he doesn't want me to do this, and we're going to swear in the commissioner for District One first, I'm going to present a plaque and give some thanks to our outgoing city commissioner, Danny Castillo. Come on down, Danny Castillo. The plaque says, "Appreciation award to Danny Castillo, recognition for your contribution, devotion, and commitment to excellence for the betterment of the city of Harlingen during your tenure as city commissioner of District One. We wish to express gratitude for sharing your experience, strength, humble, and dedicated service to the citizens of Harlingen, Texas, presented on this 18th day of May." I just want to say that if you were to look up servant leader in the dictionary to find a person, Danny Castillo, because he has the heart of a servant leader, he cares about serving his community. It's been my privilege to work with him as the mayor while he was the chief of police for our community. It's been an even greater honor and privilege to work with him alongside of him as a city commissioner, serving on this city commission. Danny brought lots of great strengths and insight to our commission, and I can honestly say that there were several times where he could have said, "I told you so," but he never did, he was too much of a gentleman. I said it for him, I said, "You could tell me now, I told you so," because every time, sometimes, we disagree, and it's great to be able to have disagreements, but still be able to know that you're my good friend, and that you have the best interest of the city at heart, and you are always such a professional and gentleman in everything you do as our competitive city commissioner. And we want to thank you. Congratulations for your service. Thank you.
I don't know why they doubt that I wouldn't want to say something. I usually don't, I usually don't say a lot, those that know me. I think it's important to speak up when you have to, but I mean, I'm just saying, the tradition that I've had, the privilege to serve with, and the collective wisdom that we have here, not just with our elected officials, but just as important as the city staff that I've been, over close to a 30-year span, somebody you've worked with, including like him. We both work very closely in the city, you know, in our professional, and as the chief, and then him as a public servant as well. And I guess that's the best way I could summarize my experience with the city. It's not so much the titles or the things that you've done, because you know, this stuff comes and goes. Title is here one day, and the next day, you have to go back to just being the best dad you can be, the best husband, the best friend, the best person you can be. So ultimately, I think that's what gives our city strength, it gives this commission here and anywhere, is the quality of people that get involved. So if anything I could say is, I mean, I could go down the list, certainly at the top of the list, I mean, there's some people like the Solises and others, and many, many others, that, you know, we sit up here, and we make decisions and stuff, but there in the trenches every day are volunteers, people who may not necessarily have a title with them or a position, but they're out there sweating and doing stuff every day. You know, a gentleman over here that's standing guard, you know, keeping us safe here, every single week, I mean, it's like he's, not just him, but his family's out there doing the neighborhood cleanups. Stuff that's not very glamorous, but that's a heart of the servant. So I've had the privilege of working with people just like that. So for me, that's what I walk away with, is a great sense of just honor, being able to say that I've worked with each and every one of you as citizens of Harlingen, and these other people up here that have decided to take that step and actually, you know, serve the community in this capacity. So with that said, I really appreciate it, mayor. I thank you for everything, and I'm not dying, I'm not in mood, I'm just not going to be pissed for a while. And who knows what the future holds, but I really appreciate it, mayor, appreciate the recognition, and thank you very much.
All right. Richard Oliven, his family took four to stand. One, officially, take hands.
I want to say a few words before I continue with my official duty. You know, I've known Richard since he was 10 years old or so. He is the best friend of my son, and they used to play soccer together all the time, and the team was called the Blue Thunder.
Now they got a visual.
And my husband was the coach. My husband was the coach, and I would have at my house all these little boys, because there would be a tournament, so you had to play two or three games that day. So my husband would say, "Okay, they need to sit down, and they just need to watch TV for a little while, relax, go take a shower." So all these little boys would be going, we had two restrooms, they'd be taking a shower, and then they'd come out, because I would take their clothes to wash them, their uniform, they'd be in their chunas all over the place running. You know, as I would, as my husband would tell them, "Sit down, rest, we have another game." And that's the Richard I know. You know, and sports, I think, are very important. When you play a sport, it doesn't matter what sport it is, basketball, football, soccer, you learn to be a team player. You learn to work well with others. Like, you know, it doesn't always turn out the way you want, you know, you wish you would have won that game, but you know, or there's a player that, you know, let the goal in, you know, and everybody's upset. You learn responsibility to be there on time, to, you have to practice, you have to do these things for the team. And all those things build your character. And that's the character that I know of Richard. He's a hard worker, he's a team player, you know, he will work, he works well with others, you know, where he works at Los Asados, all the jobs that he's had, it's always been with people. And of course, the people are not always happy when they come to your restaurant and somebody complains, but you have to be nice, and you have to take care of it, you know, take care of the problem. So that's the type of commissioner you're getting. So I'm very proud. When Richard called me and asked me to swear him in, he does not know the great honor he gave me. I called my son in Florida right away and told, "Guess who I'm swearing in?" To Marco, my son. And so I really look forward to seeing Richard in this position. I know he'll do a good job for all of us, and he'll try to make the best decisions he can make, which is all we can ask our elected officials to do, try to make the best decision you can. I want my husband to come up and help me swear in Richard, since he was his coach. Come on up.
Can I help you stretch?
Yeah. Come on over here. You don't have to say anything. I do put you on this spot. You stand right in front of me, I want everybody to see. Okay, I just want to hear you. Okay. Repeat after I tell you when to start. In the name and by, please raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I-
Aye, Richard Oliven.
-dusumely swear-
Dusumely swear.
-or affirm-
Or affirm.
-that I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute.
-the duties of the office-
The duties of the office.
-a city commissioner-
A city commissioner.
-of, you know, it's a little awkward there, I don't know why they do that. The state of Texas-
State of Texas.
-and will to the best of my ability-
Will to the best of my ability.
-preserve, protect, and defend-
Preserve, protect, and defend.
-the Constitution-
Constitution.
-and the laws of the United States-
And the laws of the United States.
-and of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take a picture with everybody. Come up to me. Go three, go four.
I want to stand back a little bit.
Over here with me, let me take a shot. On three, one, two, three.
They're both at waterworks.
Waterworks.
Announce it. Tudor Yulehorn for District Two.
I'll get my wife to come up too.
Yes. She was sitting next to Mr. and Mrs. Solis, so then I knew. You know, I don't know Mr. Yulehorn as well as I know the other two, but one thing I do know is that he's a hard worker. I've seen him, I've seen our commissioners' court meeting, I read in the paper, I talk to the public all the time, and I hear the good things that he's doing along with the rest of the commissioners. And like I told you before, that is exactly what we need, somebody that's here, somebody that will make a decision, even when it's hard, you know, and do the best they can for our community. And I feel, based on what I know, and based on what I've been told from the community, that he's very popular within the community, because they feel that he's doing his job. And that's why he won this election, you know? Because the public has faith in him, like they have faith in the mayor, like they have faith in Richard Oliven, to do the best job they can do for us, the citizens of Harlingen. With that, I will begin my duty. Please raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I-
Aye, Tudor Yulehorn.
-dusumely swear-
Dusumely swear.
-or affirm-
Or affirm.
-that I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute.
-the duties of the office of-
The duties of the office of.
-city commissioner-
City commissioner.
And I'm going to amend this, of the city of Harlingen-
Of the city of Harlingen.
-of the state of Texas-
Of the state of Texas.
-and will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability.
-preserve, protect, and defend-
Preserve, protect, and defend.
-the Constitution-
Constitution.
-and the laws of the United States-
And the laws of the United States.
-and of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just say a few words too. I'd like to thank my wife and my family for allowing me to do this. As many of you know, it takes quite a bit of time, there's lots of studying before each meeting, and lots of meetings in between the city commission meetings that happen every other week. I'd like to thank the members of my campaign team, especially the Solises, who were outside here on the corner for a week, from eight to five every day, and sometimes eight to eight during extended voting hours. But it takes a real team to win an election like this, and so I had lots of people helping me get there, and I'm very grateful to all of them. I'm grateful to all of the citizens of District Two, especially those that voted for me, but I represent all of the citizens of District Two and of the city of Harlingen equally. And it's really an honor for me to serve as a commissioner for the city of Harlingen, so I'm very grateful to everyone for allowing me to do it for three more years. Thank you.
Richard, do you want to say?
I want a copy of all these pictures.
I want to talk for a little bit, because I guess I was so nervous, I got in my seat a little bit. Glad I fit, doesn't it? Like, I want to thank everybody, my mom, my sister, my family, friends of mine that have been here. You know, I really don't know what this entails, you know, everybody tells me, "You're crazy, you wanted to get into that, into what you're doing." I think it's a great group of people, I'm very proud to be a citizen of Harlingen, I want to see you do your best, and I'm going to do my best, I'm going to work real hard. Sometimes the hardest decisions are the easiest decisions, I mean, but you've got to be able to stand up and do what's right. At the end of the day, what's right for everybody. So I look forward to working with the commission, the town's a group of young men and great staff of Harlingen, and I've been very fortunate that I was with the waterworks system for so many years, and I got to get a little introduction of how the city works and stuff. And I'm telling you, we're very, very lucky to have the staff that we have on hand. So that's all I want to say, thank you. Because I look bad, it's windy, it's wet in my teeth, so I appreciate it, and hopefully we'll have a good time, all right?
And before we go on, one more thing, just I would like to recognize our county commissioner, Stoddard Reeves. Thank you for being here, commissioner.
Thank you both.
All right, item seven is to consider and take action pursuant to the Harlingen City Charter, Article Four, Section Six, to elect a mayor pro tempore by a majority vote of the city commissioners.
I nominate Victor Lial.
May I nominate somebody? I'd like, I'd like to, I've been mayor pro tempore two years, and I'd like to give Michael Mesmar an opportunity to, to serve.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Make that a formal motion.
I would, I would make the motion that we vote and unanimously approve of Michael Mesmar as mayor pro tempore.
I'll second that motion.
Your motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, Mike Mesmar as mayor pro tempore, mostly aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tempore. I made it as a public hearing to consider orders on first reading to rezone from not designated, so now we get back to work, now it's just- So I look forward to working with the commission. Town's a group of young men and a great staff of Harlingen. And I've been very fortunate that I was with the Water Works system for so many years and I got to get a little introduction of how the city works and stuff. And I'm telling you, we're very, very lucky to have the staff that we have on hand. So that's all I want to say, thank you. Because I look bad, it just went inside my teeth, so. I appreciate it and hopefully have a good time, all right?
And before we go on, one more thing, just I would like to recognize our county commissioner, St. Edward Rees. Thank you for being here, Commissioner.
Thank you both.
All right, Item Seven is to consider and take action pursuant to the Harlingen City Charter, Article Four, Section Six, to elect a mayor pro tempore by a majority vote of the city commissioners.
I nominate Victor Leal.
May I nominate somebody? I'd like, I'd like to, I've been mayor pro tempore for two years. And I'd like to give Michael Basmar an opportunity to, to serve.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Make that a formal motion.
I would, I would make the motion that we vote and unanimously approve of Michael Basmar as mayor pro tempore.
I'll second that motion.
Your motion is second, is there any discussion? All who's in favor, Mike Basmar as mayor pro tempore, this is the I.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mayor Basmar. I made it as a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from not designated. So now we get back to work. Now it's just the, now we got to go, kind of go do all the stuff that you have to do to run the city. Designated in District Two residential, single-family R1 district, lots one through seventeen, block one, La Cadera Estates. Lots one through ten, block one, Lahara Estates. Lots one through twelve, block one. Lots one through ten, block two, Plumosa Estates. Two point oh acres out of block one twenty-six, Adams Gardens subdivision B and C. And the south point four eight, south four point eight eight acres out of block one thirty-five, Adams Gardens subdivision B and C. All property generally located on the east side of Bass Boulevard North, up Business Eighty Three, applicant's Curtis Cannon and the city of Harlingen. Bring it up.
Mayor, commissioners, these properties here was, were originally designated as actually non-designated and through the, to one of our residents who is trying to do something there, we felt that it was already in need for us to go ahead and go with the initial initiative and try and designate those. So the city staff is presenting this to help one resident, but in actuality to help all the residents there. The surrounding properties that are non-designated would be all the ones in white. And we have here multifamily, which typically means duplex, and residential one all the way around, general retail. But these are, I'll go back to the next one. But those are right now using for farmland. So at this time, we're not designating anything on that until we know that the city is, I mean, that the development might come in and it may still comply with general retail or may go back to residential one. This is just a view from the corner of Hughes and Bass Boulevard. As you can see, all of the properties there are already single-family. It's already been used for single-family. The future land use is also recommending single-family. So it's in compliance with the future land use map. That's an aerial view right there and you can see that the farmland is up on top. And this is the areas that we're concentrating on. Right here, we did have, at the planning and zoning meeting, the owner of this residence right here, who's, I believe is, there's a house right here and the rest of it is like an orchard. He is the only one that is recommending that his property not get put in at this time because he is pending to see what the other ones are going to do. It made sense to the Planning and Zoning Commission and they decided to not put that one into this designation. It's not going to affect anything. The house that is there in the front is currently single-family, but it could change with amendment. And staff is recommending approval of this.
Was this started by somebody who came in to do a, something and y'all had to make this? So you just took the whole area, that's one sub-division?
Yes, it's, it's several, I went too far. It's several subdivisions, one here and one here, but they're all being used currently as single-family homes, brick veneer.
Good item, I am just a public hearing, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing on almost a public hearing and good item, B, which is to consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a rezoned request of the above mentioned described property. I ask Mr. Billy to read the caption.
In order to amend the Code of Ordinance of the city of Harlingen rezoning from not designated in District Two residential, single-family R1 district, lots one through seventeen, block one, La Cadera Estates. Lots one through ten, block one, Lahara Estates. Lots, lots one through twelve, block one. And lots one through ten, block two, Plumosa Estates. Two point oh acres out of block one twenty-six, Adams Gardens subdivision B and C. The south four point eight eight acres out of block one thirty-five, Adams Gardens subdivision B and C. And all property generally located on the east side of Bass Boulevard North, Business Eighty Three, providing for publication and obviating other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Some of them, second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed like sign, motion carries. Item Nine, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow adult business tattoo studio, general retail GR district located at sixteen seventeen East Harrison Suite C, regularly contributing lots thirteen through sixteen, block G, East Park Terrace subdivision.
Mayor, commissioners, I would like to ask at this item to table, considering the fact that the PD did request denial of this application, just to get additional information from our police department to the city commissioners. And we have the police chief in the back of the room there and he can address any questions. But I'd like to get more information from the police department that we can share with the commission why they requested denial of the application. We, I understand the P and Z voted on this item and approved it. But I'd like to get more information from PD before we move forward.
Okay. Is there a motion to table the item?
I'd make a motion to table the item.
Second.
All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed like sign, or the items table. Item Ten, consider and take action to grant a variance with regards to the fire hydrant required on Theme Road, on the proposed RH Aguilar subdivision, bearing a legal description of three point seven three six acre tract, more or less, of a five point zero acres, more or less, out of a large tract of block five, Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision A, located on Theme Road, west of Rangerville Road, applicant's grill, and it is an urban infrastructure group.
Yes, Mayor, the urban infrastructure group on behalf of Roberto Aguilar, the property owner, is requesting a variance to the fire hydrant required along Theme Road due to the cost associated with the required hydrant for the two lot subdivision. This is, it's a little bit hard to see here, but this is one of the lots that they're asking to take out. There's an existing home right here and then this would be the remainder of lot. Well, this actually would be lot one, this would be lot two, and that's the reason for subdividing. There is an existing single-family, as I mentioned, on the subject property. It's located outside the city limits but within our three and a half ETJ. There is an existing two-inch water line. Well, that's the approximate location of it. That's what it would look at in the aerial. And this is the closest existing fire hydrant. There is a big drainage canal that kind of splits the fire hydrant to the property. So essentially, they would have to come around and build the additional one. The surrounding land is consistent with vacant land and agriculture used to the north and residential used to the southeast and west. The Fire Marshal reviewed the variance request and is recommending denial in accordance to Section one oh nine point two seven of the Court of Ordinance. No variances shall be recommended unless the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the land involved, such as strict application of provisions or subdivision ordinance, which would deprive the applicant's reasonable use of this land. The variance is necessary for the preservation of the enjoyment of the substantial property right to the applicant. The granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, or injuries to other property owners in the area. And the granting of the variance will not have the effect of preventing an orderly subdivision of other land in the area in accordance with the provisions of the subdivision ordinance. Because of that, staff is recommending that we deny this request. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, staff, I apologize. Staff recommended denial of this request, but the P and C overturned our, our request and they, they approved it and it's now before you for it.
Can you repeat that? I didn't catch that.
Staff recommended to the P and C board, denial because of the conditions that were just read, but the P and C board overturned our recommendation and they approved it. So they are recommending, the P and C is recommending approval to the city commission.
Y'all denied, y'all did not recommend approval.
Correct.
Okay, so.
The fire also, also didn't, this is exactly one of those cases that McDalia spoke of where it's very difficult because of the nature of what it would take to bring the fire hydrant to them. But then on the other side, it also sets a precedent for, you know, other developments that we're going to require have a fire hydrant.
That is correct.
Okay, so, so this rectangle on the top of this subdivision.
This one?
No, 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 correct.
Yes.
So that rectangle is to be included or not to be included?
Yes, this, this is the entire size of the property. And this lot right here is what they want to create a second lot. Right, right now, the whole outer of it is one lot.
Okay.
And they're, they are proposing to subdivide it into two lots and they're taking this into the second.
So one lot would be the rectangle and the second lot would be that irregular.
That is correct.
Bromus.
Yes.
And this is because he already has one, one piece, one prop, one building on that property.
Yes.
In order to put a second building.
He would have to subdivide.
You have to subdivide because that's what the law states, correct?
Yes.
Because this is actually for his daughter?
I, I believe so.
That's what I understood from the. Yes, sir.
If you decide to overturn the P and Z's recommendation, it will take four fifths, majority of the commission to do that, just as information.
Commissioner, I'd like to point out that we've had several discussions about fire hydrants in different parts of our town and the need to install lines and what have you. This is that type of a situation where if not now, at some point in the future, it will have to be put in.
Okay, so this existing fire hydrant, because of the canal, would be impossible to string, to string hose from there over to this new property.
Well, it would, it would require design, but it wouldn't be a straight shot. They would have to come up and go around.
He means a hose, you can't get.
Yeah, yeah, the hose. You can't get a hose across that drainage ditch in a reasonable short amount of time.
Right.
They're not going to build any, any homes, there's just.
Yes.
Well, they are going to build homes.
Right, well, the intent would be to split it so that they could potentially build a second home in here.
Did the chief leave? Yes. Chief left. Do you know approximately how many names we're looking at?
It would, it would be two, sir. There's, there's one existing home, so if they're splitting it for a lot, they can only build one more structure in that new lot.
So is that like they're going to build ten homes?
Excuse me, can, can I talk, I'm sorry, it's the first time I've done one of these meetings. Can I speak, is there a certain time that I can talk?
Yeah, yes. Just please identify yourself and let us know where you live.
Okay.
What your address is.
Good afternoon, my name's Annette Gaetan. I'm actually the daughter of Roberto Aguilar for this subdivision. What we want to do is just build in that home. What we've been told is that we have to pay seventy, about seventy-seven thousand dollars to, for the fire hydrant and for people, for the city of Harlingen, at least for most of us, seventy-seven thousand dollars is a lot of money for us. We just want to build, I just want to be next to my parents. I, I know it's hard. There's also, that road is growing across the street as well, it's growing. So I don't know if that's something maybe the city of Harlingen can take into consideration that maybe a fire hydrant should be put there. I find it kind of unfair that it's being asked of us to pay seventy-seven thousand dollars for a fire hydrant. There's homes all down Theme Road, there's brand-new, beautiful, big homes. And I don't understand how they've been able to build. And we're just trying to subdivide, just so I can live next to my parents for when they grow older and take care of them. And I just, I don't understand how we would have to pay seventy-seven thousand dollars. It's very hard for us. I would really appreciate if you can take that into consideration.
I have some questions of staff right now. So this is a narrow road, it's a paved road, it's not collegiate.
Which one, Commissioner?
Yeah, yeah, correct, that one.
I think on Basmar. Just so everybody will know, this is basically the intersection of Dixieland Road and Rangerville. Go back to the other photograph. The, when you see the, move to the right a little bit and then go up. And right there, that's Dixie, that's the intersection of Dixieland and Rangerville.
Okay.
Just so you're aware, the.
Okay, so that's the.
That way you have a reference. No, it's, it's an irrigation ditch.
That's the, that's the main irrigation canal.
And it's very elevated.
The city of Harlingen.
Right. It has a high bank.
So, okay, so that's a narrow paved road. Is there water on that road existing?
It's a two, two inch, two inch water line.
Two inch water line.
Right, which cannot support a, a fire.
And the two inch can't support a fire hydrant, we need a four or six?
I believe we need a eight.
Eight, adequately. Okay, houses to the left on this map.
Right.
There are houses down there.
Yes, sir.
Do they also have a two-inch water line?
Yes, sir.
The two-inch water line got there because Military Highway Water Supply used to have the certificate of convenience for that area.
That's correct.
So they installed the two-inch water lines. That's how the two-inch lines got there.
And the.
And that was swip, swapped. And now the Harlingen Water Works system has the certificate for that. But that's how the lines, that's why there's a two-inch line.
Okay, so those houses to the left on this slide, do they have fire hydrants?
If they're, if they do not have a fire hydrant, the reason that the fire hydrant is being required here is because of the subdivision process. If they were there prior to the subdivision or prior to the CCN switch, then they're pretty much not conforming or not required.
They, they were in the county.
Right.
Before Harlingen's ETJ was there.
Right.
So there was no requirement for them to put in a fire hydrant.
So their grandfathered in.
Nothing to hook on to.
The subdivision ordinance, or the subdivision process is what's requiring the, the fire hydrant to put in based on the ordinance of the subdivision.
Okay, so if we vote to install an eight-inch line and a fire hydrant here, can, will that continue down the street? Can it continue down the street? Must it continue down the street to these other houses who were grandfathered in prior?
That, that would be a different decision.
The engineering estimate, what was the route for the eight-inch, or the six-inch line to get to that property?
He can answer, the engineer's here for them.
I have a question. This.
Hello, my name's William Ramirez. It will run, as the gentleman mentioned, right here. There you have the existing water line right there, it will run through here, all the way around that area.
So where would it start? You would start at that intersection, basically, and tie onto the six-inch line?
Correct, yes.
And then run it over there?
Yeah, you have your two-inch line that extends all the way to other residents.
No, but let me ask you, if, if you make them pay it, as new development comes and they start connecting to that water hydrant, don't they get paid back somehow?
There's a limit to the, to the fire hydrant and how much they can extend. So if new development comes in and it doesn't meet that, then they would have to install one as well. The next one is just one there's.
But you said it does a dangerous precedent. You say, you're going to make an exception here and then another development comes along, and then you don't have a fire.
That's correct.
I mean, it's a, it's a difficult situation for us because eventually there will have to be a fire hydrant there. And somebody will have to pay for it. That somebody is probably the city of Harlingen that will end up having to pay for it. Unless, for whatever reason, somebody develops that land across the street into a large subdivision where they can spread their cost of the seventy-seven thousand dollars over fifty lots. They might bring it over, in which case, problem solved. But until that time, we, you know, it's difficult for us to override that. I mean, it's just, it was a one lot deal and it was in the country and it was where your parents had their home. As long as they don't do anything to it, everything's fine. But when you ask to put another home there, that is what causes the problem.
Well, excuse me, but at this point, the P and Z has already voted yes. So it would take four of us to vote no to overturn what they've done. So I just want to remind everybody as we're, as we're deliberating this, you know, they've already approved it, so.
I don't, I don't want to, I'm not very agreeable.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to mention the case of there will be a big development to the north of that. Usually those are profit-driven, pretty much when they sell the lots, they already count to all the costs. In this case, there's no profit. The owner's given the lot to his daughter, or there's some other health reasons for it.
It's a very difficult situation and we certainly feel for them, but it's also, it sets a precedent for the next people to come down the road and then we've got another fire hydrant that in ten, fifteen, or twenty years, the city has to put in.
Okay, so they do have city water on the two-inch line. Do they have sewage or is it septic?
There's septic systems.
It's septic.
I know. Right now, if something were to happen and the house were to catch on fire, they, they have access to unlimited water in that canal via a pumper truck. The fire department could throw a, you know, an intake hose into that and have almost virtually unlimited water.
I think that's why, that's why I asked if the Fire Marshal, I mean, the chief was here because according to what he said at that planning and zoning meeting, he said that is not acceptable.
They would have to shuttle it.
Well, there's, it's, it's a very. Well, there's, it's, it's a very elevated canal. And so to get up there and drop that hose is, is going to be an issue. They would have to bring in.
They would shut the water.
I'm just talking about if their house caught on fire.
To get the equipment up there.
So, so I guess I have a legal question now. If they build without fire hydrant and the house burns down, can the city be sued?
They can't build it without a permit.
No, no, but if we, if we allow this, they can then get a permit. The question is, is there, you know, this is, this is now back to some of the things that we read about in the paper where a city decides to allow something to happen and all of a sudden there's an incident. I don't think the city can be sued, but are we being?
No, we have sovereign immunity.
It's police function.
We have sovereign immunity, so no, the answer's no. I mean, I might give you legal advice. You can get legal advice from, from your city attorney, but we should go into executive session to get legal advice. But as a general rule, we have sovereign immunity. Uh, you know, just to, just to throw it out there, uh, what if we conditioned the variance on the payment of something akin to an impact fee? And a large impact fee, maybe a third of the cost of the fire. And, uh.
I can say this, nobody likes to pay for a fire hydrant. Nobody. And so what I worry about is, is the next person that comes in here is going to want us to pay for a third of their fire hydrant. Because they're expensive and everybody thinks they're close enough to the existing one already, you know.
I wasn't suggesting that we pay for it. I was suggesting that we give them.
To charge them a fee.
Give them the variance, the charge of a fee that would be set aside. And then as others wanted to come along and build there, they would pay a similar impact fee until we get through or for the shoulder of the burden. That, that may be impractical. I'm just throwing it out there. But we need to, uh, we need to go ahead and, is there, are there any other questions for a review or for the, for the applicant? Okay, uh, so we.
Ask us some real quick.
With, yes.
Are there, are there any, are you talking to anybody or any developers are showing any interest of developing in that area anytime soon?
None, none have made any comments.
May I make a motion to deny?
I think we have a public carry, don't we?
No.
No.
It's a, it's just a variance. Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
To deny the variance. Okay, we have.
I'll sec- I'll second the motion, just so we can vote.
Any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the, we have unanimous.
I think it was.
Unanuous, okay. So, uh, variance is denied. The P and Z's decision is overruled. So item eleven, consider and take action to grant a variance. We're doing this because we just feel, we feel like this is a safety issue, that we need to enforce this rule. It's going to be very difficult for the, uh, fire department to put out a fire if we have more structures on this, on this area. Item eleven, consider and take action to grant a variance with regards to the four to one lot length to width ratio on lot four of the proposed subtle subdivision, bearing legal description of seven point one five acres consisting of four point five two acre tract referred to as tract one and a two point eight three acre tract referred to as tract two lying east of the main canal and out of block thirty-seven of the area, land and irrigation coming subdivision located on Louisiana Road, south of T.O. College.
Now, Mayor, the developer is proposing to subdivide the subject property into four residential lots to accommodate the existing residential structures on the fourth lot for future residents' use. The existing mobile home on the proposed lots one and two and two single-family residential structures, uh, one which may be removed on the proposed lot four. The proposed lot three is vacant. The subject subdivision has five hundred and thirty-one feet of frontage on Louisiana Road and a depth of eight hundred and forty-one feet on its longest point. Lots four, which exceeds the four to one ratio, is an irregular shaped lot which has seven, I'm sorry, two hundred and seventy-one feet of frontage on Louisiana and a depth of one thousand three hundred and nine feet to its longest point. So it's, it's a real awkward looking, uh, lot. And the developer has attempted to purchase the additional land in between to try and, and fit the ratio. But the owner of that one has no, no intent of selling. And that's the reason he's, he's coming forward to, with this variance, so that he can just make them all into one and try to be in compliance as best possible, but so that he can add additional, additional properties. He has no intent of putting any structures or anything else. It would just basically be the structures in the front and he would still have to maintain, cut the grass and, and all of that. But this area right here would, would just be part of the lot, but not.
Is that his access point or what?
The, the access point on the structures is through Louisiana. They're, they're all fronting, so back here there are some eagles eastments, but they're not being used as, as, uh, access points.
But he owns feed to that strip?
Yes.
And then the strip going up and?
Yes. They're, they're like remainders of other meets and bounds that were purchased in some, sometime in the past.
Is he consolidating this?
Yes, that's what, that's what he's trying to do.
And so the Louisiana's to the right?
Yeah, right here.
Okay, and so if he, if he wanted to build something back there on that T, he would have to get a permit to do that?
It, about the only thing he can put back there is a, a small storage unit. No, no residential will be allowed because he won't have enough room to have access.
Right. Any idea what that width is there?
I believe it's somewhere around two hundred and seventy feet or so.
Okay.
It, it kind of moves around and it narrows as you see the meets and bounds on it, but there, there is no intention. Really, what he was trying to do was acquire this part so that he could bring it down and it would be less irregular.
But is this in the city lines?
Yes.
It is.
And staff recommends approval. And so did the P and C board, just, just, there's just.
So the issue is the dog leg, is that the issue?
Right, well, the issue is that it doesn't meet the, the one to four ratio for subdivision.
Because of the dog leg.
Because of the dog.
It doesn't mean anything, really.
It's his property. I mean, he still, he still owns it.
But the shape of it is.
Okay, so the P and Z approved this.
Yes.
Staff recommends.
Staff recommends approval.
Is there a motion to grant the variance?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item twelve, consider and take action to approve the lease agreement for rental parking spaces within the city of Harlingen. Marina Trevino for the parking lot located in southeast corner of Jefferson Avenue, First Street, bearing legal description of one. Lots one through seven, block one point six, Harl Commercial, town signing.
Actually, Dave is going to present that.
Mayor, members of the commission, um, the applicant is requesting an S U P from the P and Z. They have not gone to the P and Z yet because the issue of parking has to be addressed first before the P and Z can hear the request. Uh, the property is located at three oh two North First Street, which is this location right here. They are just outside the D I D, which comes through, to there. Had they been inside the P and Z, the parking requirements would have been waived. Uh, the applicant is thirteen, parking space is short. Uh, in the past, the city has executed agreements with, uh, potential business owners. Uh, some of those have been Savorte Golfo, which is a restaurant down Commerce Street. Dave's White Club and the Boys and Girls Club. Right next to them is a public parking that the city owns. They need thirteen, uh, parking spaces. And so we are requesting that the city sign an agreement allowing them to use these thirteen, uh, parking spaces for a dollar a year. The contract that you have, though, erroneously lists the requirement for ten parking spaces and would have to be amended. It lists spaces one through ten. It would have to read spaces one through thirteen. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the, uh, contract since the parking area is public parking and they would be allowed to park there anyway. So, staff is recommending approval.
You know, I've only driven by there, what, hundreds of times? It's, is there existing building that they're going to be using or they're going to be building something?
It's, no, it's, the existing building is right there. They want to have some, um, an event center. And so that's why they need the S U P. So the P and Z has to approve that, but they cannot consider the request unless they have the parking in place.
Catch twenty-two.
Wait a minute, what? Their lot goes all the way to the back?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Draw their, their piece of property, run their outline on the, the whole beach.
Right there, yes.
All the way back.
Yes. That, that is correct. Yes.
Is there any issue? Because we're using that for also our, our two venues there, are we not?
Uh, yes, this is the Casa de Sol and this is a community center.
Correct. And we also have a parking lot to the east of that.
It's right here.
Correct.
This is parking and then this is additional parking and there's additional parking right there as well.
But we're not going to reserve that. It's just going to be owners come first.
No, no, right. It's not going to be reserved. They're not going to put up signs. They'll just be able to count that toward their occupancy. So.
And their event center is, how big is it? How many square feet is that event center?
I don't, I don't have that information. Do you know what that is or do?
Anybody else leasing that, any of those, any of those part of their parking space?
No, not, not, not this one. Now, there is a restaurant, though.
It's a taquito, right?
Right there, yeah. And there, some of their clients do park over here, but I don't, they don't have an agreement with us. So I think that, that we're grant.
I mean, basically, that's public parking?
Yes, it is. So they'd be able to park there anyway. They just have to use those thirteen spaces for.
Right.
This is more formality for them to show that they have the thirteen spaces.
Yes, that's correct.
Because that is public parking.
That, that's correct. And if you agree to, uh, allow them to use the thirteen, uh, parking spaces through contract, we have to amend the, the spaces. It does say spaces one through ten. It should read spaces one through thirteen, so.
That's an maximum of a five-year term right now. It's one year plus four, one year options.
Uh, that's correct.
So we could, so in the five years, we're not giving it to them. Okay.
I'll move, I'll move for approval based on the amendment of agreeing to parking spaces thirteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say approving the lease agreement as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thirteen, consider and take action to approve the preliminary ranking of the insurance consulting firms for professional consultant services for insurance to assist in researching, developing, and implementing an employee self-freely funded health insurance life. A D and D Employee Assistance Program, Mission Down Insurance, Cafeteria Plan, and Products and Authorize City Management Negotiation Contract with a highest ranked firm.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Item number thirteen, uh, the city of Harlingen went out for professional consultant services, an R F Q, and we received four submissions from four companies. In front of you, I believe you have a tally sheet. The committee met and we ranked them as we went through the, uh, submissions. The highest ranking, um, company was McGriff, Sebel, and Williams, followed closely by Arthur J. Gallagher. And the two other companies were ranked as, as the tallies were totaled.
And, uh, staff is recommending that, uh, we contract with, uh, McGriff, Sebel, and Williams. We've, uh, used them in the past. I know that this year we had some, uh, insurance issues there, but, uh, we can make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Staff's recommendation, uh, tally I'm looking at says McGriff, Sebel's, which is Scott.
Gibbs.
Yeah.
Scott Gibbs. Gibbs, Scott Gibbs.
Scott Gibbs, who's been, who's up on that, a good job for us in the past.
And he has, I know we had some issues with this last, uh, go around, but staff is going to do a little more due diligence. It's time to make sure it doesn't happen again and pay closer attention to, to the, to the responses.
Is this who we used last year?
Yes.
And the year before?
And the year before, and the year before that.
Right. We, we've been pretty consistent using that term.
Yes.
And I kind of looked at the ranking and it's kind of split. Two, two went for Arthur and two went for McGriff individually. But the total points was for.
And, and that's the purpose of the total point system?
Correct.
Correct.
So I, I know that, I know that, you know, it's just a matter of y'all watching. Who's, you know, are, are they, are they looking at these tallies right? Correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
When, when they go out for all the votes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, is there a motion to approve the preliminary ranking as presented and authorize the city manager negotiating contract?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, consider and take action to approve resolution authorized the mayor to accept grant funding with an amount of sixty-five thousand dollars to Texas Criminal Justice Division, local board security program for open time law enforcement initiatives geared at the, uh, border security.
Good evening, member, uh, mayor and members of the city commission. Uh, city Harlingen has an opportunity to, uh, accept and approve funding in the amount of sixty-five thousand from the Texas Criminal Justice Division. Uh, the purpose of the grant is to enhance border security and to, uh, work highway enforcement by law enforcement officers and through fairs leading to and from the border, uh, the borders and the city of Harlingen. Uh, staff recommends, uh, approval and the signing of the resolution by the mayor.
Well, we always like to have grants.
Yes, sir.
So is there a motion to approve the grant?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take action to change the regular city meeting meetings from June first to June eighth, June fifteenth to June twenty-second.
Mayor, commissioners, I, I'm scheduled to be out of town the week of May thirtieth, June the third. So I'm asking if we can move the, the meeting on the first to the eighth. And since we're moving that meeting so that we don't have a meeting the next week, I'm asking that we move the meeting from fifteen to the twenty-second. Um, that still leaves two weeks before the next meeting, which would be the first meeting of July, uh, first Wednesday of July. And again, I recommend approval and your decision.
And it's my birthday on June first, so.
And it's the mayor's birthday.
As much as I like you guys, I just don't want to be here.
I can't be here on the eighth. I have a out-of-town doctor's appointment, so.
Does anybody else have any other conflicts?
I might be out June twenty-second.
Okay, well, that's one and one. Is there a motion?
A motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm going to skip item sixteen, come back to that later. Item seventeen, consider and take action to accept or deny the donation of four equipment improvements to R C parks from the Harlingen Wellness Coalition and nonprofit organization. I hear.
Mayor, city commissioners, um, we're here again to, um, either accept or deny, of course, the, um, donation from the Harlingen Wellness Coalition. And what they've, um, are willing to donate is this shade shelter, um, here on the left-hand side. It's a twelve-by-sixteen shade shelter. And our plans are is to install this on the Twenty-Fifth Street hike and bike trail across from Bonham Melorman tree. And then they're also, um, go back to the one. They're also wanting to donate this, um, the two of these multi-level water fountains. You can see on the left, they, it's for, um, for dogs. And then, of course, the person, and then on the right-hand side, there's a bottle filler. So if somebody has their bottle with them, they can fill it up, uh, while they're on the trail. And the next one. And the next one is, um, lighting of the basketball court at Pendleton. Um, since we have the lighting on the trail, what we did was we, um, anticipated lighting in, in the future. So we ran a conduit to the, to the basketball court. And, uh, the Harlingen Wellness Coalition is, um, willing to pay for the construction, installation of lights.
Are those L A D lights?
Yes, sir.
And is there water for the water fountain?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I say we accept the donation. Is there a motion to accept it?
So moved. Second.
There a motion, second? Any discussion? I want to thank the Harl Wellness Coalition for all the work that they're doing to work with us on these improvements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item eighteen, consider and take action to approve an ordinance of first reading establishing fee payment, uh, by credit card.
Good evening, Mayor and city commission. Um, the city has experienced an increase in the number of payments of fees, fines, and other charges via credit debit card. charges via credit debit card. We're proposing a fee that would defray the charges the city is assessed by the merchant processors for handling electronic payment transactions. May I answer any questions?
Captain, Mayor, Commissioner, we get charged a processing fee by financial institutions every time somebody uses the credit card. That comes straight out of the city coffers, and all we're asking is to implement a percentage fee to recoup those costs. In the golf course case, I believe that our fees total about $30,000 a year. That's a lot of money coming out of their budget. So we're not saying you can't use credit cards, we're just asking if you use credit cards to pay the fee for processing that payment.
The county has a similar thing.
The county has a similar thing.
Most cities are going to...
So what is this fee?
3%.
3%.
3%. And this would also allow us to start using more credit card machines at our scale house, at different city buildings that we're not doing now, make it more convenient for folks to pay, but as long as we have the fee in place, then we can recoup those processing fees.
Mr. Belby, would you read the...
An ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas, establishing, authorizing, and setting a fee for processing a payment by credit card in the amount of 3%, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances providing severability grounds, establishing an effective date, and ordaining other matters related to foreclosing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? All is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 19, Consider Take Action to Approve a Resolution in Support of Cameron County Commissioner's Court Adopting a Freeport Tax Exception to Help Above Economic Development. Rodell.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Please, just for the record, note that Commissioner Tool, you have left the room and filed the appropriate documents with the city secretary.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead.
It's been several weeks, probably almost a couple of months, since the county commissioner's court decided to put on their agenda a consideration for exempting Freeport goods from taxation. Back in the early 80s, there was a constitutional amendment that was brought by the state legislatures and approved by the voters that allowed for the exemption of Freeport goods. And Freeport goods are any inventory held in warehouses for manufacturing, for processing, food storage, that type of thing, that's held in a warehouse in Texas, but then shipped out of state within 175 days or less. There's a different definition for oil and gas and different definition for aeronautical parts and that type of thing, but for the most part, it's 175 days or less. There's a total of about 121 companies in the county that qualify for Freeport tax exemption from, for example, the City of Harlingen, the City of Brownsville, and other communities who have adopted this exemption already. There's school districts who have adopted this exemption as well. And it basically was done because prior to this constitutional amendment, prior to all this happening in 89, nobody was charging for a tax on the inventory, on the personal property. Since that couldn't be done, they had to start taxing, they allowed the local entities to decide whether or not they wanted to tax or not. Harlingen, Harlingen C I S D decided not to tax the inventory. Cameron County decided to tax the inventory. Back then, the amount raised by Cameron County was in the hundreds of thousands, in low hundreds of thousands. Now, with 121 companies where it qualifies, it's at $1.6 million in annual revenues. So it's a little bit more significant than it was back then. But Hidalgo County, Tarrant County, Hayes County, Williamson County, several other larger counties where the large metropolitan areas, where a lot of the large industrial base is located, do not tax Freeport goods. So we are, they're not, it's a competitive disadvantage for us, for Cameron County in general, whether you're in San Benito, or in Brownsville, or in Harlingen, or anywhere elsewhere there's a warehouse that is being taxed on the inventory. We're paying more in taxes on that inventory than they would be in those counties where they have the exemption. So the county brought it up, and we started supporting the county and saying, yes, we think it's a great idea, it's a great economic development tool for you to go ahead and exempt those goods. So they're still going through the process of trying to figure out how to make up the loss of revenue, which they'll have for a while. But in the long term, you get more jobs, you get more industrial development, more warehousing being built, more capital investment, and thus, you make up for that loss. That's the plan, anyway. In 1997, Hidalgo County adopted the Freeport exemption. And if you look at their tax base in 1997 versus in 2016, it's a huge difference. And a lot of it had to do with a lot of industrial growth in South Mission. So a lot of it had to do because of Freeport exemption, a triple Freeport, if you will. So that's what we're trying to do, is try and encourage the county to adopt this exemption. The E D C board has already approved a resolution similar to this one. The Harlingen Industrial Foundation has already approved a resolution similar to this one, as has the Harlingen Manufacturers Association. So that's where we're at, and I'll be glad to answer any questions with that. Oh, one more thing. There's a total of, let me see, in Harlingen, 85 million, it's quoted to the paper, 100 million, but I was rounding it off, I found exactly the number, so in 2015, there was $85 million worth of Freeport exempt goods in Harlingen. That represents 881 employees in those companies. 881 employees who benefit because of what we've done at the city level and at the school district level, and we're just encouraging the county to do it at the county level as well.
So everybody, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to understand, so this is the tax, like, for example, a Makila is moved into that inventory here to ship out, is that not correct?
Sure.
And it's warehoused, let's say, for 30 to 45, 60 days, it's 175, and sometimes it sits there before it goes. But that's what this really represents, right? It's that, it's not something that we're warehousing like a Walmart.
No.
That stays, this is an interim, it comes here, and then it goes out.
Correct. Let's use some specific examples without being real specific on the numbers. Valley International Coal Storage has several clients that they do business with. When that product comes in from other parts outside of Texas, it comes into their facility and that gets processed and shipped out, on January 1st, those companies have to do a rendition, basically telling the appraisal district, this is what we have in inventory. And if they don't have the exemption, as in the case of the county, then that inventory gets taxed, it's personal property, at the same tax rate as the real property does. So whether it's, you know, somebody that's storing goods at Valley International Coal Storage, Cardone, I T D, Ad Tech, any of those guys that have inventory that they're processing and then shipping out later on, they get taxed on it at the county level. Right now.
So all we're doing is encouraging the county to go ahead.
Right. If there was a fiscal note for the city, it's a zero.
City's already doing it, has been doing it, but...
It does not impact the city coffers at all.
We know of one instance in particular where we lost some jobs here in Harlingen as a result of this, that the county has Freeport tax exemption. Almost lost the whole company. So, all right, any other questions for Rodell? Is there a motion to approve the resolutions for the legislature?
I would like to make the motion that we support this resolution.
Second.
Any other discussion? All is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. All right, are there any board appointments? All right, thank you, Rodell.
We have 16 to...
Are there any board appointments?
What if I have 16?
We have one, okay.
For the C B G, I'm appointing Sisam Morales for the C B G board.
Any other appointments?
I have an appointment.
I'd like to appoint Rodolfo Endaza to the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board.
Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
So moved. Second.
All is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item 21, this executive session presents Chapter 551, Subchapter D, D C A, Texas Government Code, Sections 551.087 and 551.071, and 551.072 regarding purchase exchange lease or value of real property, including consideration deliberation concerning sale of city property received, donated property, and commercial and financial information for business notice project H Q, in which the city commission is going to conduct negotiating process with legal advice from the city attorney regarding these matters. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
All is in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the city commission is going to meet with their lawyer and executive session, and there may be some action items afterwards. Where are we going to go? Where are we going to go? Are we going to go downstairs?
Mayor, I don't know if they moved, we tried to remove the boxes from the executive session room. Oh, it's clean, okay, so then it's in the executive session room.
They're, okay, we'll go back to the executive session. Okay, we're out of executive session at 7:45. Okay. We're going to pass item 22. Go to item 23, Consider Take Action to Accept the Donation of Property to the City of Harlingen as discussed in the executive session and authorize the city manager to sign all documents related to this matter. Is there a motion to accept the donation?
So moved. Second.
All is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item 24, Consider Take Action to Authorize the City Manager to Negotiate the Terms and Conditions Related to Project H Q as discussed in the executive session. Is there a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate the terms as discussed in the executive session?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. And I'm going to go back to item 16, I'm going to hand the chair over to the mayor, Pro Tim, and I'm going to excuse myself. Good night.
Good night, Mayor.
And for the record, reflects, the mayor has left the room, he has filed the appropriate affidavit and extension with the city secretary.
Okay, so item number 16, Consider and Take Action to Approve Inter-Local Agreement Between the City of Harlingen and Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District for the Use of Two School Buses During the 2016 Summer Parks and Recreation Track Program and Authorize the City Manager to Sign In Inter-Local Agreement. I hear.
Mayor Pro Tim, City Commissioners, this agreement here, we've had this in place for several years now. We've used the school buses for our summer program, for our track and our recreation program. And so when I discussed this with Dan, we felt that it should go before the city commission for approval. This will be for the summer sessions, both sessions, it'll be June 6th through August 1st, and we'll be using, we'll have use of two buses, but we only use one, we have one as a backup. So what we do is we pay them, I believe it's $19 per day. Last year, we paid the school district $994.76, so we imagine it will be about the same. And this amount is already budgeted as an expenditure for that reason.
Any questions of the council?
I would suggest in the agreement, and I don't know whether we're going to talk about that or not, in the first paragraph, we describe the city as having its principal administrative offices at 118 East Tyler Street in the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District here, and after designated as a district, that needs to have, having its principal offices wherever they are.
We'll make that correction.
And the other question I had was, as part of the consideration for this agreement, city shall obtain and maintain an insurance policy covering use of the school buses for a term not less than the length of this agreement. Do we schedule these buses every year, call our insurance company, and schedule those serial number buses and add them to our deal?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So good. And there was one correction I had that I've already given to the park director, and I think he's already incorporated that into the contract, so I asked that you approve it subject to these changes before I've sent to the city manager for signature.
So may we have a motion considering the changes that Mr. Belby has mentioned?
So moved.
And the, including the one that Commissioner Yor mentioned.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Then we have citizens communication on number 25. No, no citizens communication. Then, what is the official apple time here? 7:51, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending and your support.